Good morning. If you would like to speak, we were going to ask you to sign into. Thank you.
In regard to the proclamation, would you like me to sign?
Please do. Well, it is eight thirty. Is everybody ready? Lindsay, you're ready? Good morning, everybody. This is Delta County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting for September 2nd, 2025. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good morning. Is there any additions or edits to our agenda this morning?
I have none.
Very good. The agenda will stand as presented. Constituent time, is there anybody in the room like to visit with the commissioners this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning. Can't believe it's September, but here we are. Anybody online, Lindsay?
No, sir.
Thank you. That brings us to County Clerk, Terry Stevenson.
This morning I have the minutes for the August 12th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners Special Meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes?
I have done.
Good to me.
I also have the minutes for the August 19th BOCC Regular Meeting. Were there any additions, deletions, or changes on that?
You know, in here.
Very good.
My next item is your consideration to appoint Joshua Wallid as an arbitrator for Delta County. I reached out to Mr. Wallid last, I guess it was last week, and was asking if he would be interested in sitting as an arbitrator for Delta County, and he agreed. We had a brief conversation and I provided you with his resume and his information. And therefore, I believe he does have the credentials to sit as an arbitrator for Delta County, which would give us more than one for our list. There was like 10 more than less. So I would recommend he be added to our arbitrator's list.
Is that an action item for us?
You did do it last time when we did Mr. Nicely. You did have an action.
Why move that we do appoint Joshua Wallid as an arbitrator for Delta County?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for finding that one.
Also, I have your consideration of a special events license for Slow Food Western Slope to be located at 129823700 Road in Potters on September 21st. This is an annual event for Slow Food Western Slope. All these documentation and publications have been done. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the special events permit.
Questions, discussion on this one? I believe we've done this one before.
I'll make a motion that we grant a special events permit for Slow Food Western Slope to be located at 129823700 Road in Potters for September 21st, 2025.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also have another special event permit for Grand Mesa Arts and Events Center to be located at 26365 Cactus Park Road in Cedar Edge on September 7th. Again, I've received all necessary documentation. These publications have been done for this application. Therefore, I would recommend approval of this special events permit. And do you have anything to add?
Okay.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Why move that we approve the special events permit for Grand Mesa Arts and Events Center to be located at 26365 Cactus Park Road in Cedar Edge for September 7th, 2025?
Second motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And please come and join us. Do you want to wait and get to your appointment?
Where do I sign? Is it that line? Because I believe that's you.
Thank you all for your time, your efficiency. I appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you for holding these events. I'm sure there's a lot of people looking forward to it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good morning.
Okay, next, under Commissioner Business and Tri-County Health Network Suicide Prevention Coordinator Jamie Huns and recognizing September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Good morning.
I'm Kaiser Simon. I'm the health equity advocate at Tri-County Health Network.
The microphone's on?
We're good. I'm Kaiser Simon. I'm the health equity advocate for Tri-County Health Network. I'm here on behalf of Jamie. Thanks for having us.
I got a copy here. Well, we do have a proclamation here. We'd like to enter into the record on behalf of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month being September. So, in recognition of the 2025 Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, this proclamation recognizes suicide as a national and statewide public health problem and suicide prevention as a national and statewide responsibility and designates September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Delta County. Whereas in 2024, our region experienced 41 community member deaths by suicide, predominantly middle to late-aged white males. Whereas each year, approximately 13 million adults seriously think about suicide, 3.8 million making a plan for suicide, and 1.5 million adults attempt suicide. Whereas in 2024, 1,306 Coloradans died by suicide, with the majority being in the age range of 35 to 44. Whereas our local Suicide Prevention Awareness and Recovery Coalition, thank you for being here, and organizations such as Tri-County Health Network are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through education, advocacy, and resources for those who have experienced suicidal thoughts or lost someone to suicide. And together, we urge that we recognize suicide as a preventable public health problem. There is no single cause of suicide, and that anyone can experience suicidal thoughts, and that recovery from suicidal ideation is possible. Acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities and address the disparity in access to mental health care for underserved and underrepresented groups while advocating to end these disparities. Develop and implement strategies to improve and increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services and programs, as well as support post-prevention plans for community response to a death by suicide. Support the efforts of the Suicide Prevention Awareness and Recovery Coalition in fostering connection and spreading the message that we are the ones that talk about suicide. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Wendell Lake Coons, Chairman of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, hereby designate September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Delta County, Colorado. We're going to go ahead and get a signed copy for you, and we can do a second copy for you.
Wonderful. While you do that, I just wanted to say thank you very, very much. The Suicide Prevention Awareness and Recovery Coalition is a six-county coalition that has meetings, events, and trainings to help reduce suicide in our six-county area. This runs in Delta, Montrose, Erie, San Miguel, Hinsdale, and Gunnison County. Some of our upcoming offerings for this month, on September 10th, we'll be having a virtual training called Talk, excuse me, Talk Saves Lives is an introduction to suicide prevention. That's from 5:30 to 6:30 virtually, and you can go on the Tri-County website to sign up for that if you're interested. It is free. Additionally, on September 20th, we're going to be having a Walk for Hope in Montrose, starting at the Rotary Park at 9:00 AM. And then finally, in our counties and in the other counties, we have, thank you, we have a therapy scholarship fund called the Recovery Access Fund, which helps to provide free therapy sessions for folks who are experiencing substance use or misuse. People can just apply to our application on our website, and they get up to 12 sessions, $110 per session of free therapy in the area.
That's very good information. Thank you. And I'll add to that. Following the November 17th Gunnison Basin Roundtable in Montrose, Robert Sacata from the Colorado Department of Agriculture will be presenting a film called Legacy about suicide in the agricultural community, and certainly invite you to join us. There'll be more advertising about it as we get closer.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you want a photo?
Yeah, we'd love one. I don't have a fun green light bulb to hold or anything.
You gotta get it closer.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I might get locked out of this too today. It's just. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Chris Stewart is here for your consideration of the intergovernmental agreement between Delta County and, oh, and Delta Health regarding the Homeland Security Grant program. Chris?
Good morning.
Morning.
So, a few weeks ago, we signed an IDA between Delta County and San Miguel County, who's the fiscal agent for the state homeland security grant through FEMA. Homeland Security Grant, San Miguel County is requiring that we have a similar IDA in place between Delta County and any sub-recipient agency. Delta Health, the first one, we've been working, I've been working with them on a project to get some security cameras installed at the hospital paid for through this grant. Basically, the purpose of this IDA that's in your packet is to outline the requirements of the federal grant and so that they're aware of the terms and conditions of the grant and that if they go outside the terms and conditions of the FEMA requires, and if FEMA were to ask for the money back, that Delta Health would be responsible for paying that money back, not Delta County. So it's just a layer protection, and I did run it through John before I sent it up to legal counsel there. They've reviewed it, and CEO John Koke has signed it. Any questions?
Gentlemen, questions on this one?
No, thanks for all your work. This is one of the shorter documents that we've received from you, only 12 pages.
And I apologize for the formatting. They used DocuSign, and it broke the formatting, apparently, when they put it through there, because that is not how I send it to them. But since it's signed, I did not want to modify it.
So this is an action item, and it would be for the chair to sign.
Why move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement between Delta County and Delta Health regarding funding by the Homeland Security Grant Program and authorize the chair to sign?
I will second the motion.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you want a physical signature?
Yeah.
DocuSigns. And John, I saw that there's a place for you to sign, too.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, next, for your consideration, then, a resolution pumping out of the electric motor vehicle charging system permitting process established by House Bill 24-Batch 1173. Fisher Cooks, I believe this is yours.
That's correct. In reference to that statute, this is an opt-out program where if we do not opt, it would be, we would have to follow the rules and regulations stated by the state of Colorado for any installation of EV chargers. We think Delta County's got plenty of experience and technical know-how to do this, so I recommend opting out of this permitting system that's run by the state.
I would agree. I think we need to cumber ourselves with this number state mandate to ourselves.
And this would be Resolution 32.
I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-Dash, I forget what it was, number 20?
32.
32. Resolution opting out of the electrical motor vehicle charging system permitting process established by HB 24-1173.
I second that.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
How many charging stations has the county installed?
Five.
About five of them? Good deal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, John, for getting that done.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay, next, then, Lindsay, you'll review the BOCC schedule, please.
So I'm having to do this a little bit different this one, because I couldn't get my computer up and run the slides. That's amazing. So today, we, after this session, is in our big school. After that, we have a work session with Friends of Youth and Nature from 1:30 to 2:00. Tonight is a Republican party meeting, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. September 5th is a Club 24 Conference until September 6th. September 10th is the CEU Wednesday, 10 to 11:30. September 11th is the Municipal Quarterly, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. September 12th is the 2025 Delta County Quarterly Economic Update with Nathan Perry. That is from 8:00 to 12:00 PM. September 16th is our next Board of County Commissioners regularly scheduled monthly meeting. That's from 8:30 to 12:00. September 16th is the Board of Health meeting, 3:30 to 4:30.
I think we got a road and bridge at 1 o'clock, too.
Are we starting those again?
Yes.
And that'll be once a month?
Yes, for the remainder of the year.
At 1:30?
Is it 1:00 or 1:30, Robbie?
It's 1:30.
You've had it both, so what would you prefer?
What do the guys prefer?
1:30 is probably fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
September 17th is an AGNC to backboard meeting, 9 to 1. September 18th, CCI Renewable Energy Working Group, 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM.
That's just for me.
September 22nd, one Delta County Board meeting, 3:30 to 5:00 PM. September 24th is Coffee with Mish, that will be with San Miguel County, 7:30 to 8:30 in Crawford. September 24th, 11 to 12, is Board of Health Nomination Discussion. September 24th, 5:30 to 9:00 PM, is Disaster Management Overview Course.
Till 9:00?
Yep. We're all in that, too. We get to, we get to. September 25th is the Fostering Hope Project, 1:27, that's Canadian, 12:00 AM. September 25th is our 10 Board Exec Committee, that is 12 to 3:00 PM. And that comes out for the rest of September. I know you have enough to add.
On the 30th is the Garden Mesa Grand Opening. I got 10 o'clock on here. Is there anything else that needs to get on our joint calendars here, gentlemen?
We had a Sheriff's Department meeting September 3rd, but that was the one that we canceled, because that was to do with the pre-trial services, I think. Okay.
I don't see anything. You got it all.
Thank you, Lindsay.
You got to leave your computer back on more often. Failed it. Off your device. That's amazing.
I'm going to quickly go through the jail reports and invite Officer Rist to come join us. See you this morning. We have two jail reports for today. Monday, August 25th, 2025, Delta County Detention Facility Population Count Report. Male inmates, county jail 40, female inmates, county jail 4. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, 0, female inmates, Department of Corrections, 2, total of 46. Average daily inmate population for the week of August 18 through August 25 was 52.73. For Monday, September 1st, 2025, male inmates, county jail 45, female inmates, county jail 3, male inmates, Department of Corrections, 2, female inmates, Department of Corrections, 1, total of 51. The average daily inmate population for the week of August 25 through September 1 was 54.03.
Well, good morning.
Good morning. Oh, right as on? Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Scott Rist. I'm the Park Manager for Schweitzer Lake State Park. And I'm here to give you an update of current situation of the build-out and expansion of Schweitzer Lake State Park and the future of it, and some financial benefits of building out the park to the county. I hope you have some maps that look kind of like this with you. So the very first one is the goal of the agencies where we want to get to. The bad news is this goal is eight to nine years out. The good news is that currently, we have about $8.5 million to kick off this project. We are in the Request for Proposals stage right now for what we consider Phase 1 of the project. This phase is leveling of the bigger area to the west of the park, which we call the Morphet Property, and within leveling it and then bringing in the main utilities, all the trunk lines, and then with that, also building one campground loop in there. And that campground loop will be about 15 sites, and there'll be all full hookups with some probably two to three small cabins built in there, too.
Which of the four campground loops would you build first?
The one that's right next to the lake. We're going to start by the lake and then move west.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Also, on this map, you can see right below, right in the center, there's a box. And we also got $360,000 to build an archery range that that project will hopefully kick off sometime this fall. And then on the far right, we're in the process, we got a $60,000 planning grant to build wetlands, which will support activities such as hunting, bird viewing, and then some walking paths through it. So like I said, this is the ultimate goal of the park, is to build about 100 campsites with five to six cabins, five to six yurts on it. All the campsites will hopefully be full hookups. Then also a new visitor center, five to six acre pond with multiple day-use areas and playgrounds within that. Our projection is, once fully built out, the visitation will be between 300 and 320,000 people visiting the park.
You have Ridgeway out of business?
Ridgeway's now over a million visitors a year. Yeah. So we'll be close. But that's the goal. As you know, it's all based on funding. There is a commitment from the current executive management team of CPW to keep funding Schweitzer Lake State Park to get the full build-out. It's the number-two priority for the agency to get built out. So that's funny.
It's number one, you know.
Fisher's Peak is down by Trinidad, is number one. And they're halfway done, so. So, money, I said 8.5 million-ish coming online to build everything. Sounds like a lot of money, but it's not. So if we switch to the next page, which calls the Morphet Property page, as you can see in here, everything highlighted in blue is which is out right now for Request for Proposal. That closes September 18th, and then we'll do the bids, hopefully, or awarded grant sometime in early October with a construction date hopefully starting early March. And we will have a golden shovel kickoff, which I'll make sure you gentlemen are invited to, to celebrate the construction of the property. Then the last one is just more in-depth what we're hopefully trying to do with the park. So the future is, the goal is to build this out in phases, about six phases in total. The next phase is building a new visitor center on the park. We have money already guaranteed to s- We have money already guaranteed to come live, uh, fiscal year twenty-seven. About ten million dollars to build out the visitor center and then all this instruction around it. And then continue building, uh, campsites on out. When fully built out, the park will have about five full-time employees and then hire fifteen temporary employees to run the park. Some big issues is, is getting drinking water to the park. Getting, uh, the sewer out of the park. And then some of the electrical lines have to be upgraded coming in. That's all I really have for updates, if you take any questions.
How's the visitation been for twenty twenty-five compared to twenty-four?
So, the lake was down, we redid build the spillway, the sixty-year-old spillway. Visitation was down, but it wasn't down that much, what we found is, is that a lot of people like not having boats on the reservoir. And we, on weekends, we were averaging fifty to sixty paddleboarders out on the reservoir. So it's slightly down, but not a drastic amount. Once we opened back up the boating, the paddleboarders kinda slimmed out and the boats came back and it's, this weekend, we were pretty busy for most parts, um, even Saturday with the weather not being as great. So, I, I can't tell you the, the final numbers for the year, but I know last year we were about ninety thousand visitors for the year and we're probably gonna push at least eighty thousand visitors this year.
Well, that's a wonderful facility to have so close to, to Delta and to, for Delta County.
Yeah. In the end, once it's built out with the three hundred thousand visitors, uh, we figure the current figure is about eighty dollars per visitor impact to a fifty-mile radius around the park. So the agency's figuring about a twenty-four million dollar impact to a fifty-mile radius around the park.
And you said the first campground is the one that's, is it Loop D, that's gonna be closest to the lake?
Correct.
How many sites are in that one?
Uh, fifteen.
What can we do to help, uh, assure funding stays, um, a priority for CPW for this project?
Um, I, I think just letting legislators know the importance of this, the agency knows the importance of it. Um, I think that's the big thing, keep pushing that aspect, that the benefit to Delta County is gonna be significant. And, uh, just keep it on their radar i- if something were to change down the line.
If you need us to do something, an action item for us to be, let our support, personal contact, would you let Robbie know?
Yes.
Cause we can jump in on that.
Yes.
Cause we do wanna see this, this thing continue.
Yes.
This is a heck of a great project.
Yeah, it, it's, um, it is my design, so I'm super excited about it. But the financial, the user benefit to the, the area and the financial benefit to the county. We, we highly recognize that, so it's gonna be great.
And that lake on the Morphet Property, is that to be built?
Yes, it's a five to six acre pond. And hopefully those fifty, sixty paddleboarders will go on there versus intermix with fifteen boats going around in a circle.
Delta County built a playground two years ago, year and a half ago. It's quite a process, if you need any tips or pointers.
Yes, 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 I built, when I was a manager at Crawford, I built two there and
It is.
It's quite the process, yes.
More, more shockingly, um, expensive than I realized, too.
The fall material for, if you fall, was the most expensive thing of the whole thing. Yes. Uh, we did during the master design, uh, a, a year ago, we had a meeting and had input. For most parts, the, the biggest input we got was from local birders. And what we were gonna do to help support habitat and make sure that their birding area was still, uh, protected. The, the lake is the number two birding area on the west slope, so, yes.
What's number one?
Fruit growers, yes.
The water and sewer, are you coming across country, will you go down the road to the highway, or do you know yet?
The sewer is gonna go down the Highway fifty, the city actually pre-planned a while ago for when it was gonna be a subdivision fifteen years ago, and there is a step out for the city sewer there, so. That, um, we will, we're gonna try to come in from nineteen hundred road to the east. Uh, there's some easement rights issue, uh, the county has a thirty-foot utility easement right through there. But Tri-County requires a sixty-foot easement right. We're talking to the landowners over there, it sounds like it benefits them first, allow us to bring a water line through. If we build it and then they're able to tap into the water line for their own tap, would help them significantly, so. It sounds like they're gonna be willing to allow us to expand out to sixty feet for Tri-County.
You're obviously bringing in a much larger water line to serve all the campsites and stuff up, that what you're doing, or?
Yeah, current, currently, we have about a two-inch water line that only has about forty PSI. Um, and we're gonna be tapping into an eight-inch and bring a four-inch across that has about a hundred and twenty PSI, so. Significantly help us better, otherwise, if we can't do that, we have to build a, basically a water tower. And become a water distribution ourselves, which we don't wanna do.
I think you have the state agencies who don't wanna do that.
There are some parks that make their own water and, uh, it's, it's not a fun thing to do, I, I've been told.
I can imagine, well, the water service, you know, campground used to have springs available, water pipe throughout the campgrounds. Rear porch pickets throughout, and they shut all those down now because, I'm sure it's because of water issues.
Correct.
Make sure we got clean water.
No, you guys know this, but Scott's been instrumental in the nature connection and getting kids out to this area and, and just exposing them, so. You know, well done, Scott, to continue to improve that, so thank you.
Yeah, uh, the, the park is used as a part of their summer camp, um, for the six weeks they, they have summer camps, they come out there and paddleboard and fish. So, and then we also do, uh, we started last week, we do half of Delta County's fifth graders, we bring them to the parks and give them the experience on the parks with paddleboards and fishing and archery. And we're told by the teachers, it's the number one, uh, outing that kids wanna go to every year.
How's CPW and the park set for archery equipment and?
Uh, we're pretty good, uh. Our Hunter Ed Education lady out of Durango keeps us supplied well. There's grants out there that we can get it and we, we have no issues getting archery.
I know RMEF likes to fund stuff like that, too.
Well, thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, that's all we can do to help.
Okay, um, well, thank you, gentlemen, for your support along the way, um, and purchasing the two large parcel of park, parcels along the way and all the support going forward.
Well, good to see you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is planning, at ten o'clock, we will recess until then. We're gonna come back on the record, it is September second, twenty twenty-five, this is Delta County Board of Commissioners' meeting. It's ten o'clock time for planning, I'll turn this over to Mr. Gardner.
Brittany is going to present this case, it's a big issue, it'll go right away.
Very good. Yeah, make sure your mic's on. Can you slide that mic closer to Brittany then?
Hey. Today, uh, before you, PLN twenty-four dash zero three eight. This is a, for Delta County, uh, Campbell Road Vacation. This is to consider a va- vacating a portion of Campbell Road dedicated to Delta County and Road Right-Away, uh, located in Hotchkiss. And so I'll start off with a quick introduction, um, this application was submitted by County Engineer near McCracken along with the property owners. The property owners approached Road and Bridge Foreman, John Allen, uh, about pop, the possibility of closing Campbell Road or making the subject pride, road private. Uh, a site visit was performed by Mr. McCracken and Mr. Allen to review the request. Mr. McCracken stated that the portion of Campbell Road, which is on a gravel road, uh, is steep and narrow. Therefore, they have agreed to, that this portion would be in the county's best interest to close camp, this portion of Campbell Road. So I did pull up, oops, I'm not sure what happened, so sorry. I did highlight on this slide what the portion, um, that is being requested to be vacated, I also did, uh, go on Google, Google Maps to show you what the, um, road actually looks like off of Highway one thirty-three. And so this is going towards Hotchkiss. Uh, Campbell Road is right off to the left where that mile marker is, as you can see, it's kinda steep right here. Going to a different angle, this is going towards Payonia. Picture kinda says a lot, it's pretty steep right there, and it shows that it is a gravel road. And then again, looking down Campbell Road. And so with that, the recommend, recommendations for the BOCC is find that the purpose of accepting the dedication has changes, changed, and therefore the subject portion can be vacated. And, uh, approving the vacation plat titled Vacation of a Public Roadway, Dean slash Eldridge needing approximately one point zero seven acres for road, uh, road, road right-of-way for Campbell Road from Delta County to parcel three two four three one six one zero 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 one. Dean located at thirty-six, seven, ten Campbell Road totaling in zero point six six acres. And parcel three two four three zero nine four zero 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 two, two four Eldridge. Located at thirty-six, eight, thirty-nine Campbell Road totaling in zero point four one acres. And, um, as vacating the portion of Road Right-Away, Campbell Road from Highway one thirty-three east to thirty-seven hundred road will become a private road and shall be removed from the Delta County Road Maintenance Program, as shown on the plaque. The county shall assume no maintenance responsibility for private roads. All future maintenance and upkeep will become the sole responsibility of private property owner. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Brittany on this one, gentlemen?
No other, uh, properties are accessed off of Campbell Road?
Not on this portion, um, if I can go back. So the portions, um, or the properties that are off of this section of Campbell Road are only the ones that are requesting it, so Ms. Dean and Mr. Eldridge, um, they were the ones that approached John Allen to either vacate it or make it private. Uh, we did look before we came down here, uh, it, there are two other ways that you can get to Campbell Road off of thirty-seven hundred road and then again lower it's M fifty, um, but.
So there's more residences on, you know, to be
On the back side.
Would be east, you know, on Campbell Road, but you can go on thirty-seven hundred road to the north or to the south and get access to the highway.
So, Brittany, what is CDOT's position on this?
I am not sure if, uh, County Engineering reached out to CDOT. Or our department did not reach out to CDOT as well.
Cause the question would come up, is CDOT gonna allow a pri- is that gonna be slated and got rid of?
Or closed down?
Yeah, I think that's what the intention is.
It's currently closed now.
It's blocked off.
Oh, it is gonna
It is barricaded off right now.
Curious if CDOT's gonna allow a private, private drive on there. So our intent is to close it.
Right.
Pull the signs, close it off with some.
We don't know if it's been, how long it's been barricaded, but we did get confirmation this morning that there is a, a barricade right there.
It's probably been since January.
That's a really bad intersection. So that's what sparked, sparked this, and I looked at it with John also. It's, it's time we get rid of that one.
And we did, um, post it for public comments and we have not received any at all.
Any other questions, comments here, gentlemen?
No.
It'd be my recommendation to the board that we do approve this one.
Do you have the resolution?
Did you hear from Campbell's?
I did not.
Why move that we approve the, and what resolution would this be? Thirty-three. Resolution number thirty-three, granting a vacation. PLN twenty-four dash zero three eight, Delta County Campbell Road Vacation. Which will be vacating a portion of the road dedication to Delta County at the right-of-way of Hotchkiss, parcel three two four three one six one zero zero one. Just Dean and three two four three zero nine four zero 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 two four Eldridge.
Second motion.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's all we have on your agenda.
Don, anything else for the board this morning?
No. I could say that the PC, uh, meeting last week went well and did review and, uh, give the comments on the natural medicine business, which I can send to you individually if you'd like to see those comments.
Please.
Okay.
And in that vein. Either at the next BOCC or the first one in October, we ought to have that on our agenda. We'd be ready by the sixteenth of September. John?
Well, I mean, we're kinda in the middle of something here, I'm happy to talk about it, um, I don't know exactly what you're asking, but we can clarify that offline.
Okay. Anything else, then? Well, that'll conclude planning for today, thank you guys for your work on this.
Thank you.
We're gonna go now to County Attorney, John Barrett.
Thank you. Thank you, I have one item for the board's consideration, uh, this morning as Board of County Commissioners, and then after that, uh, sitting is the Board of Expletive. Uh, but the, the, uh, the item, uh, for the Board of County Commissioners is the board consideration of a right of first refusal, uh, regarding property located on Hidden Mesa Road in Austin, Colorado. This is involving a situation that the, that the board is familiar with. They closed today, later today, on the thirty-nine point five acres, uh, on Hidden Mesa Road with the, you know, uh, travel pit and such, um, from Ace Ranch LLC, that's scheduled later today. Part of that, um, interaction, part of that, uh, transaction is a right of first refusal to Kate and Ashley Price for that, um, and that's what you have for your consideration today, if the board consider that and have the chair sign that today. I'll just actually take that to closing and get, uh, Kate and Ashley assign it, uh, uh, later today. Any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
No, I think it's a sore in the belt.
Mike, I didn't know.
The motion would be to prove a
It's on page one of his.
Like a motion that we approve the uh right of first refusal regarding property located at Hidden Mesa Road, Austin, Colorado. Between is that all you can say, or you didn't?
And just authorize the chairs.
Yeah, authorize the chairs, so.
I second that.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you for that, uh, that's all the business I have for the board of county commissioners uh proper. Uh, I do have one item for uh the board of equalization. Um, and that would be under executive session, pursuant to advice of counsel. Uh, car over, advise statute twenty-four six four oh two, uh, section four B. This would be in regard to discussion and advice regarding an arbitration request involving Delta County account R zero 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 two three eight located at two one four one seven College Drive in Cedar Ridge, Colorado. I would recommend that the board of equalization, if it goes into executive section to discuss that matter, I'll remind everyone who's present in the executive session to be able to keep your comments to that topic. And then, Chair, it looks like you're ready to adjourn once that's, once that's concluded.
That's correct.
Well, I move on advice of counsel, we go into executive session discussing the board of equalization regarding an arbitration request involving Delta County uh at the address twenty-one four seventeen College Drive in Cedar Ridge. The people that will be present will be the three commissioners, Robbie Levalle, Terry Stevenson, and uh
John Bear.
Lindsay Mitchell and John Bear.
Again, Lindsay, I don't know if it makes a lot of sense for Lindsay to stick around the executive session.
So Lindsay will be excused right after our discussion, uh, we'll be adjourned.
Second motion.
Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Everything off?